Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for two stage July 7th, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac. Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent Griscoviac.
Thank you. Next item is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Any corrections? Or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And we are up to the approval of the minutes from the June 16th meeting.
I'll move that too.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the minutes are approved. We have five items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to approve the first amendment to the lease agreement for River Trail Learning Center. The city in Anoka-Hannipin School District Number 11, the district, entered into a lease agreement dated August 17th, 1999, concerning the district leasing a portion of the unused grouse street and portion of adjacent city-owned property for expanding the parking lot and for circulation at the district's L.O. Jacobs Elementary School now known as River Trail Learning Center. In 2020, the district received site plan approval for a project to make additions to the school and to the parking lot. The district would like to lease additional land from the city to accommodate the additional parking spaces needed as a result of the district's project, and this was also a condition of the district's site plan approval. So we'll be looking to approve the first amendment to the lease agreement with Anoka-Hannipin School District Number 11 to lease an additional portion of city property near River Trail Learning Center. Next item on our consent agenda is item three on this evening's agenda, and that's to consider adoption of Resolution 20-62, appointing Zachary Juntinen to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Zachary Juntinen submitted, and I'm really apologizing if I'm messing up your last name, submitted an application for the Parks and Recreation Commission in approximately January of 2020 and attended both the February and March 2020 Parks and Rec meetings. The Park and Rec Commission discussed it and recommends Mr. Juntinen be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2023. After this appointment, there remains one vacancy on the Park and Recreation Commission to be filled, and if there is an interested applicant, but advisory commission appointments have been on hold because most commissions didn't meet in April, May, or June due to COVID-19. Staff anticipates that those advisory commissions will resume meetings later this summer, and the applicant will be invited to attend the next Parks and Recreation Commission meeting to meet with the other commissioners and discuss the position. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-62, appointing Zachary Juntinen to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2023. Item four on our agenda this evening, and we're still on the consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 20-61, accepting a donation for Sand Creek Park. The city council is being asked to authorize the acceptance of a $700 donation from Don Oaklessen to fund the purchase of a park bench at Sand Creek Park. Ms. Oaklessen has donated $700 to purchase a park bench as a memorial to her son. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-61 to accept a $700 donation from Don Oaklessen. The next item on our consent agenda, item five on this evening's agenda, is to approve final payment to T.A. Schiffsky &amp; Sons Incorporated for Project 20-11, Avoset Street Mill and Overlay. The actual project costs were less than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid, so we're looking to approve final payment to T.A. Schiffsky &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $139,652.60 for Project 20-11, Avoset Street Mill and Overlay. That's such a great bargain, you know?
Yeah.
Boy, that... And the last item on our consent agenda, which is item six on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 20-63 declaring the official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city. The attached resolution declares the city's intent to reimburse expenditures made for the acquisition of a new replacement fire engine number one with the proceeds of a future tax-exempt bond. Since tax-exempt bonds are subsidized by the federal government, Treasury regulations put limits on what qualifies. Mr. Stemwaddle, you had a question from Councilmember Griscoviac, and did you want to give it, kind of give us the highlights of that?
A little review, sure. Mayor and council, I would describe this as preserving the opportunity for the city to issue bonds for the sake of purchasing a fire truck in 2020. We originally anticipated using fund balance to pay for the truck, but given some of the uncertainty and changes in revenue and projecting out to 2021 and what our fund balance looked like, at that time, we had a conversation with our financial advisor about potential options to finance that. Typically, in the past, we've issued equipment certificates for this purpose, but given the market for bonds right now, which are very inexpensive from an interest rate standpoint, he recommended that we look at issuing general obligation bonds in order to preserve that since this project's already in the hopper. He recommended that we issue this, which would preserve our right to issue those bonds down the road and use the proceeds of those bonds to pay for that engine this year. So it's really about preserving flexibility, and we'd be looking at some rates in between 1.1% to 1.34%, so extremely low historically. And given that we know what those are and the potential we might need to use some of those next year, we thought we'd better take advantage of those rates now instead of in 2021.
Very good. Thank you. So we're looking to authorize Resolution 20-63 declaring the official intent to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city, and that's our full consent agenda. Your Honor. Councilmember Wells.
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Geisler. Any discussion or questions from that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I do have one, you know, I think you mentioned it, you know, with the appointment to the Park and Rec Commission. We do have a few other commissions that still have openings, and those are kind of on hold, right, until those commissions start meeting again for the people who have put in applications?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, that's correct. We just had put a pause on that as the council, as the commission meetings weren't taking place. Usually, the process is that the applicant will come to a meeting or two so that they can get a feel for what the tasks are and the dynamic of the group and decide for sure that they're interested. So we have a two or three applicants that are sitting, and we're hoping to get moving on commission meetings later this summer. But we do have some openings that if you're still interested in applying, please do so. There are six on the Arts Commission, one on the Board of Appeal, one on the Civil Service Commission, one on Park and Rec, as we mentioned, four on Safety, and one on the Sustainability Commission. So if you're interested in serving your city on an advisory capacity, please apply.
Thank you for the information.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second from the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We're on to item seven, which is to the levy of miscellaneous 2020-1 special assessments. I imagine we have a new amount.
Mayor? Yep. Mayor and council, we do. I can provide that whenever you would like that, but I can do it right now.
Sure.
So for the 41 parcels with one-year assessments, that will be a total of $23,288.41. $23,288.41 for that one. And then the 20 parcels with the three-year assessments, that total is $50,256.10. $50,256.10.
Okay. So the total's about $8,000 less than we had. We were at $82,300 or so.
Yep.
So the amount to be assessed for the 2020 sub-1 miscellaneous assessments is the total of those two amounts that you just read to us. And as of June 30th, 2020. The amount reflects payments and adjustments that have been made since June 16th, when the assessment hearing date was set, and updated amount will be distributed. Oh, well, we just got the amount. The revised process of hearing assessment appeals will include a hearing before the Board of Adjustment and Appeals before city council adoption, and the city council must still open a public hearing as required by state statutes. However, at that hearing, the city council should collect written appeals and refer appellant to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for their review and recommendation. After the public hearing has been closed, the city council may adopt the assessments which have not been appealed. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals is expected to meet on August 6th and will make a recommendation to the city council at the August 18th council meeting. The terms of repayment of these assessments are determined by the amount being assessed, and the proposed assessments are categorized by the number of years to be assessed and the interest rate recommended. Amounts up to $1,000 will be in one year, payable in one year, and amounts up to $6,000 will be three years. So the first thing we need to do is to hold an assessment hearing to collect written appeals. Do we, do I have to, do I have to actually gavel that in? Nice. Okay. So we've opened the assessment hearing to collect written appeals. If anybody has a written appeal they would like to turn in? Anybody has a written appeal to turn in? Now is the time. And if not, is twice enough?
You're looking real eager to strike that.
I am ready to go.
Yeah.
All right. Well, we're going to close that. And we're looking to adopt, well, so we've done that, and now we're up to the adopting resolutions.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-57, adopting 2020 sub-1 miscellaneous special assessments unopposed one year.
You want them together, or do we have to do them separate?
Do them.
Perfect timing, Mr. Brody. You want these together, or do you want them separate?
Let's do them separate on these.
Yeah, the answer's not on Amazon.
So second. I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your Honor?
Sure. Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-58, adopting 2020 sub-2 miscellaneous special assessments unopposed three-year.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. I'm gonna have to remember that. Even if I knew the answer, that'd be the perfect time to ask. All right. Onto item eight, which is to consider adoption of ordinance 2234 and ordinance amending Chapter 12-400 Fire Prevention Code. I would list this under housekeeping. At the request of the fire marshal, the attached ordinance has been prepared to reference the 2020 edition of the State Fire Code, so it's all here. Anybody that looks, who wants to consider some dry reading? A summary of the 2020 State Fire Code changes is attached for review. So does anybody have any questions on this, or Councilmember Demmer?
So it's just adopting the Minnesota code, but there were a few changes in the Minnesota code that I was curious if they would affect any local businesses and how the local businesses find out. Like, for example, I saw one of the big things was separating out adult daycare from child daycare from, like, they changed a bunch of those terms around and then put people in different groups, and then the different groups had different sprinkler requirements and whatever else. So just curious if anything in here is something we should call people and let them know that there's a new code on, or if people are grandfathered in, or how we deal with the change.
This'd be a great question for Chief Wise, or wouldn't that, or Chief, or Fire Marshal Williams? Or Chief Wise, well, you're Chief Piper's chair, so... Sorry. Excuse me.
Mayor and council, I can follow up with a specific answer to that. Typically, yes, you, once you're, if you're an established building, you don't have to come up into code unless you have a project that's large enough, or you're completely renovating, or building a new building, then yes, you have to comply with today's code. If you have a building that's already under the current code, you wouldn't have to upgrade it per se until you get to that point. But beyond that, if there are some specific things that our fire marshal would be aware of, certainly, we can make those communications to those businesses.
Okay. That was it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2234, amending Chapter 12-400 of the Fire Prevention Code.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item nine, which is to consider planning case 20-5, consider adoption of Resolution 20-59, approving a registered land survey, 3101 Carey Street, David Martz. Mr. Harlecker, you have a little presentation on this one?
I'm being, uh, mayor and councilman.
It seems like all we're doing is kind of correcting what probably should have been done in 2004, the way it looks like these are gonna get split, but...
Yeah. What is being proposed is a registered land survey to subdivide a portion of this lot here, and then it would be transferred to the property owner on the, to the south. The area under consideration is, excuse me, outlined here in black. This is actually what's being proposed. This is the main parcel right here, and what they're doing is taking, I believe it's the south, twelve, about twelve and a half feet, and subdividing that as parcel B. The remainder of the existing lot will be parcel A. The intent is, is to then, the property owner to the south on Lot 9, Track B will then be transferred to Lot 9 and combined as part of Lot 9. Some background on this, back in 2004, the city vacated. This was an old street easement. The city vacated that easement, and the property reverted to the owners of this property here. So they've owned that since 2004. And after discussions with the Mertz's, which is the property owners to the south here, they reached an agreement to split that old easement and give half of it, transfer half of it to Lot 9, and the other half will stay with the existing parcel to the north. The reason it's an RLS is because it's a mix of legal descriptions, abstract intorrance. Typically, something like this could either be done with a lot split or even a lot line exemption, because you're really just moving a lot line. But because of the different legal descriptions, they have to go the RLS route. At the Planning Commission meeting held on the 18th, no one spoke at the public hearing, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the proposed RLS. And the recommendation is to approve Resolution 20-59 with the condition that all engineering comments be addressed and Track B be combined with Lot 9 to the south.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion in planning case 20-5, to approve Resolution 20-59, approving the proposed registered land survey with the stated two conditions.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 10 on our agenda is to consider appointment of election judges, approve salaries, and set the canvas date for the primary election. Minnesota state statute requires that election judges be appointed by the city council at least 25 days prior to the election. We have, we have a list of election judges by precinct, and we are looking to authorize the city clerk to make appointments and substitutions as deemed necessary during the 25 days prior to the election. Election law allows for emergency appointments on election day should the need arise. We're looking to, proposing that the election judge hourly salary remain at $11 per hour with the assistant head judge at $13 per hour and the head judge at $15 per hour. Student judges would be paid $11 per hour. And then, of course, city council will be meeting to canvass the returns and declare the results on the second or third day after the primary election. So we're looking to set a special meeting to canvass the election results for Friday, August 14th, 2020, at 7:30 a.m. The meeting will, of course, be brief, and at least four council members must attend. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Lenzmeyer, or anything else you want to go over before we move on?
Mr. Mayor? Council?
Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Nope. We do have a bit of a wrinkle in that we've lost our polling location in 5-4, so that's something that I am quickly trying to rectify, and will be coming to you at the next council meeting to change that polling location. Other than that, we're in good shape as far as election judge recruitment goes compared to some municipalities, so I feel blessed that the residents in this town are stepping up to do the job that we need them to do. I could use a handful more, so if you're interested, please apply or give me a call. Send me an email.
Okay. So for those keeping track, if you normally vote at the Emma B. Howe YMCA...
Correct. You will not be.
You will not be this year. You'll be voting somewhere else. Probably still in Coon Rapids, though, right?
Absolutely.
All right.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion to approve appointment of election judges as outlined on the attached list. Should I just go through them all? That's fine. We don't have to do them one at a time. Authorize the city clerk to appoint and assign election judges during the 25 days preceding the election if substitutions are necessary. Approve hourly salary for election judges at $11 per hour, assistant head judges at $13 per hour, head judges at $15 per hour, and student judges at $11 per hour. And finally, schedule a special meeting to canvass the results of the primary election for Friday, August 14th, 2020, at 7:30 a.m.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion?
That was Demmer.
Close enough.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Second. The man.
That was not a shot. Sorry. Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. I was actually thinking how regal Councilmember Kicker looks with that flag right behind his head and the, yeah, it looks nice.
Well, it highly screwed you up, because I usually do the election judges, because I always was an election judge.
Maybe that's it. Yeah. Thank you for trying to bail me out, but... Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to the open-mic public comment portion of the meeting tonight, and let me dig my instructions out here, because it looks like we're gonna have some participants this evening. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids, and remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only. If necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. So whoever wants to start?
My name is Keith Stephens. I live at 3044 116th Lane Northwest here in Coon Rapids, and I am part of the Coon Rapids Cruise team in a sense. We did start the cruise, myself and our car club, Cold Steel Cruisers, and we just wanted to kind of bring you guys some positivity from the things that have been going on lately. I know most is, for the most part, has been complaints and whatnot, and we would like to at least let you guys know that we really appreciate the hard work that has gone on within our city and on the council board and people that were involved to make things stick around and give us some hope during this time of COVID. I've listened to many different stories from people, and one that always stands out to me, that hits me in the heart the most, is the fact that I had someone reach out from me, or to me, from a hospice care situation that is basically right off of Coon Rapids Boulevard. And the one thing I want you to remember, when we bring people together, we bring people together in many different ways, and this is just one of those ways. Basically, a father that had not been so much involved with the kids anymore due to dementia issues and whatnot, is bringing up subjects such as cars that are going by that they do hear. I know noise was a problem, but sometimes those noises bring back memories, and those memories open gateways to different things and different ways to express with our families. I also know that walking down the Boulevard, and I'm looking at people spectating this event, that you can honestly say I have, I don't see many children on their cell phones paying attention to stuff like that. And I just want you guys to know that it affects so many more people than just us here, and I want to say thank you to all of you, even CRPD. You've done a phenomenal job of basically taking care of this event, even though it wasn't really your problem to take on. It really has been sited to the right area. That grass lot makes a huge difference for us. I see a huge noise cut down, and I just want to say thank you to all of you that worked very hard for us to be able to keep doing this. And there are some other people here that would like to acknowledge the same fact, so...
Without the same stories and...
My name's Alex Brush. I live off South Ice Drive, 2541. I kind of just want to talk about car cruises as well, kind of how it started for my family and how it's just been a huge positive thing during all this COVID. So COVID, everything's unpredictable, right? You know, people are home from work, kids aren't going to school, all that stuff. So the first time we had it happen was car cruise number three, and we had just came home from dinner with my in-laws over Maple Grove, and we're all sitting in a parking lot eating pizza. It was the first time we saw them over a month. It was weird. Couldn't hug them. They couldn't play with my kids. I have an eighth-month-old and a four-year-old. They couldn't do anything with them, so it's weird, right? We're driving home, and all of a sudden, we start seeing all these cool, cool cars, classic cars, muscle cars, everything, and we're like, what is going on? And then we started seeing people on the sidewalks sitting there watching, and we're like, what is going on? You know, it's been a really depressing time. And we drove, kept driving, we kept seeing more cars and more people, just kind of, everyone's sitting doing their thing. We drove past our house and kept driving, and we just pulled over. We said, we gotta see what's going on. And I pulled over and talked to the guy next to us. I said, what's going on? And he said, this is the Saturday night Coon Rapids Boulevard Car Cruise. How do you not know about this? So I'm like, oh my gosh. I go to tons of car shows, I like all this stuff. Go on social media, immediately find it. I'm like, boom, I am hooked. So I start calling family and friends from everywhere, and I'm like, hey, next Saturday, we need to be at this. It's right by our house. We gotta go. And so my daughter was loving it. Same thing, no phones, watching the whole time, no iPad, nothing, just like, this is the coolest thing ever, you know? Compared to the car shows we go to, you see the car sit there, hoods open, you don't ever get to hear it. She gets to now see the car drive by, and actually, it's not like a toy, it's, it's a vehicle driving down the road. So we have now gone to it every, every Saturday. We go, we have a group of friends, family that come from Minneapolis. My parents live up by Walker. They come down every so often and watch the show because they want to see it. It's like the old Porky days, as they talk, you know, when they were kids, they'd go down there and watch it, and they can do that now, you know? It's something we don't have, and my generation didn't really have that, and so my parents and, you know, uncles and stuff get to see that, and they, they like it. But one thing I kind of want to end with is, my daughter, like I said, is four. Now, when she sees a cool car, hears a cool car, wherever we are, she asks if it's Saturday. You know, if we go to the show tonight, it's like, ah, it's Tuesday. So it's kind of ingrained in her head, and she's enjoying it. We load up the wagon, we walk to the Boulevard, the same spot every time, and we enjoy it. It's, it's been a huge positive thing since, since this whole COVID started, you know? We can't, can't do anything, and this has been able to have us, as a family, do something. So...
Let's all end. Thank you.
I'll read one. Josh Snyder, one oh nine oh nine, Champlin. Uh, this one was emailed to us. Uh, Kim Nelson, she was asked to speak tonight. Uh, something came up, emailed instead. She lives on Quinn Street, but I grew up on the Boulevard Service Road, and it is where my mom and dad still reside. Myself, my family, and my parents are very much in support of the Saturday Night Cruise in a day and time when it was impossible to do anything due to the COVID nineteen. It's a wonderful thing to do, to look forward to, and an excellent opportunity to get to know the community. My husband, our daughter, and myself have spent time at three of our cruises, three of the cruises at my mom and dad's house. Uh, they know absolutely nothing about cars, other than that they're, they look neat, she says. Uh, her dad, on the other hand, is eighty-two years old, and he'll tell you about every car, make, model, year, regardless if you care or not. Uh, back in the day when Coon Rapids had a racetrack where two forty-two is now, he used to race his sixty-eight GTO. He grew up in the era of the Model As, Model Ts, so the cruise brings him a lot of joy. For all of us, it is a great night, spend with family. Uh, paragraph, paragraph, paragraph. Uh, service road. Sorry, I've been trying to paraphrase here. Lot. Uh, uh, great for community, getting to the otherwise known people you might not talk to or even see in the public. Uh, everyone has been pleasant, respectful, and always willing to talk about their car. Coon Rapids has always been a car destination, and so, and so long as people are cautious and respectful, the Boulevard is the perfect place to show off these amazing machines. Please continue to let the cruisers cruise. It's an escape we all need. Thank you for your time. Kim Nelson. So, I'm, oh yeah, I didn't say I was part of the, part of the Cold Steel Members also in the club, and, uh, yeah, keep going. Hopefully we can. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Barstow, six zero five one hundred and thirty-ninth lane northwest in Andover. And I am the owner of the Boulevard Bar and Grill in Coon Rapids, and I just came to say that we are one hundred percent in support of the cruise. It's been, uh, a wonderful promotion for our bar in particular. Um, everybody involved, uh, the organizers, the, the riders, uh, the customers have all been extremely, um, pleasant to work with. Um, in fact, Keith himself has picked up our parking lot pretty much every Sunday morning. It's actually cleaner than it's ever been on Sundays. Um, uh, and I guess that's it. I just want to say thank you. We appreciate your efforts and hope this can keep on, uh, going on. Thanks, guys.
John, thank you for owning a business in town. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name's Brian Stem. I'm a resident of Coon Rapids. I live on ten eight eighty Mississippi Boulevard. Uh, I think we're the fourth or fifth house down from Coon Rapids Boulevard, so we live pretty close. Um, we're not car people by any stretch of the imagination. I actually have two young kids, uh, eight-month-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old, um, but it is our neighborhood, it is our backyard, and we're pretty deeply connected to Coon Rapids Boulevard. Our church is there, our daycare is there, my veterinarian, my auto mechanic, my dentist, my, uh, local watering hole, um, you know, both of my children were born at Mercy, so that's a pretty meaningful place to us and our family. And, um, pretty much every single weekend, uh, barring some rain or maybe some early bedtimes, we've been out there walking and engaging with our community and seeing our neighbors. Uh, for us, it's mostly the food trucks. I love the pizza one, that's now at the Archery Place, and we always have the same debate as to which cheese curds are the best and how far we're going to walk. Um, for us, it's been a really powerful and meaningful, positive thing that we've seen in our community, um, especially this year, given all the challenges to, to go out and to see our neighbors and, and, and especially to see the diversity, right? There's so many different age groups and types of cars and demographics, and, and everybody's out there sharing our home and, and, and our backyard. Um, you know, for us, it's definitely been a spark and, you know, I guess, I guess just like a real spark, if, if it's not controlled, if it's not contained, it can cause a wildfire, right? It can, it can burn people, it can hurt homes. Um, so, big thanks to the organizers and definitely the police and, and the city for keeping it safe for, for me and my family. Um, I also think, you know, in the same way, a, a spark can be used for good, right? If you light a bonfire, all of a sudden, you've got an area to combine and collect as a community and to gather, and if you do it really well, now you have a beacon to other cities to show the community and the neighborhood that we are. So, um, I for one am really eager to do whatever it takes to make sure that this continues to be the positive and encouraging event that it has been for us, so, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
My name's Brian Flatam. I live at one two three seven seven Ivywood Street. Used to live at eleven four oh one Ivywood Street, nine blocks away, right off the Boulevard, right behind Cheesecake. Um, I've lived in Coon Rapids for nearly twenty years. My kids have grown up here, um, gone through the whole school system, multiple schools. I remember back when there was Target. I remember the car dealerships, multiple malls. We don't have that. We have it up by my new house, but we don't have it on the Boulevard. And the city's done a lot of work to revitalize the Boulevard, whether, you know, different projects, more housing, things like that, which is really good. And we've had a lot of traffic go through the area. This cruise started back when the, uh, the COVID thing hit. Um, I think it was right around, if everybody remembers, there was a young boy had a party in Blaine. He asked for a couple cars to cruise by, made the news. You're nodding your head. Suddenly, I don't know, a couple hundred people showed up. A lot of them are the people that end up coming to this cruise. This group has done an incredible job. I'm not associated with them, though, for nothing other than time. Um, you know, I've organized car shows, I've organized car cruises, some of the largest cruises in the upper Midwest. They're doing an excellent job. There are things you run into. Sometimes it's just staff helping, sometimes it's legal things with vehicles. They welcome the law enforcement there. They welcome, if there's a problem, fix it. It's not, it's an individual thing. It's not because of the cruises, it's because of that individual causing problems. Going out cleaning up garbage on Sunday mornings, getting people to help do that. There's a lot of people that are not from Coon Rapids coming to that area and seeing these businesses, whether it's Boulevard, Leonard's, Arby's, whatever it is, there's like ten auto shops right down there. I know there's some owners from, from those businesses here as well. Um, I've been in vehicles that have cruised up all the way from Belle Plaine. He's like, wow, this is awesome. This is a big thing. And it doesn't cost the city anything. That's what's amazing about this. All of this publicity, all of this revitalization of the area, and you're getting more traffic through that you didn't have before from other communities coming in, Blaine, Coon Rapids, Spring Lake Park, Andover, all of these other people that didn't really know the area, and suddenly now, wow, look at this, and it's getting built up because Highway Ten came in, it was kind of forgotten about. And now it's not, and I think it's a good thing. So, I'd like to see it continue. That's all I have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gregory Garconian. I live at eleven West Thirty-Fifth Street in Minneapolis. Um, just wanted to start off by saying I'm pretty new to Minnesota. I just moved here about five months ago from the East Coast in Maryland, and, um, there's a lot of car shows on the East Coast. Um, I've been into cars since I was a kid, so I was like fourteen, or as soon as I started driving at fifteen, I started hitting car shows. And, um, since I've been here, one of the first things I did when I moved to Minnesota was trying to look up car groups and, you know, find some new friends around here. And, um, a couple months went by and I saw this Coon Rapids thing pop up, and there's not really many shows going on in the city. The roads around there are like pretty bad, too. And, uh, this cruise going on, it's, it's actually compared to, compared to all the car shows I've been in, it's truly an amazing thing to have that many cars just cruising up and down without someone like immediately ruining it. Um, sorry. And, uh, to see it just happen every weekend consistently and people just all going together, um, it's really a great way for people that would normally not interact with each other to all meet up and, you know, cars will, cars will park, and eventually, you know, you'll just start interacting with people and talking with people, making friends, and it's, uh, it's a great, great thing going on. Um, I hope that out of all the businesses, you know, I know that there's a lot of people that are unhappy with the noise and, uh, especially with the trash and, uh, a couple other little things, and, uh, all I can really say is, uh, try not to let a couple of bad apples, um, represent all of us. Um, I'm, compared to all the guys here, I feel like I'm the youngest one, and there's a lot of guys that are eighteen, nineteen, and like, you know, sixteen, driving around, and it's a lot of the younger guys that make those bad decisions, um, and, uh, I hope that this cruise can continue long enough so that we can correct those things. We're trying to pick up trash more and more, trying to figure out ways to calm everyone down, you know, just meet and relax and talk and chill is what it's all about. And, uh, I really appreciate the city for putting up with it because I really love it. Makes my weekend every weekend, so, thank you, Coon Rapids.
Thank you. I almost, I almost feel like at some point I should interject that we had a workshop on this, and the consensus was we're going to try and keep it going, and to that end, Keith, you've been a yeoman on this, so, thank you.
I live at eighteen eighty-three one hundred and twenty-first lane northwest, unit nine oh one. I have lived in Coon Rapids for fifty and a half years, and I lived over right off of Coon Rapids Boulevard for twenty-three years, and now I've been at, uh, Creekside Crossing for twenty-six and a half years. And we love cruising. My daughter Roxanne with me, we go every Saturday night that we possibly can. It is so wonderful, and it's so nice. Most of the time, the weather's been nice. I wasn't here this Saturday, and one time, one night it rained, but just to sit there and watch the cars and watch all the people and all the joy that it brings, I just think it's wonderful, and I thank all of you that are, are speaking toward that tonight, too, that, uh, it's just absolutely wonderful. So, I am here tonight because I am the, um, law and order where I live, and, um, probably, uh, Mr. Wise remembers a few years ago, I, I faced the, the swamp there. My house is right on the corner of one hundred and twenty-first Avenue and one hundred and twenty-first Lane, and I had just had my hip replaced, so I had my chair positioned where I could watch the T V and I could watch the overflow parking out in front, and I saw this black car come in and park and just sit there, and I could see them moving newspapers around and lighting up a cigarette and do it, not leaving, you know? I don't remember how long I gave them, and I called the police department. I told them what was going on, and, um, so they said they would check on it and they would call me back. Well, before they called me back, another black car comes and pulls in next to them, and you can tell they're together, and I thought, what on earth are they up to? And, um, so I just kept watching, and nothing happened. They didn't get out of their cars, they just were sitting there, and pretty soon the phone rang and the police department called and said that there was a sting going on, that there was some, um, stolen goods that were being sold out of the garage of one of our, our townhomes there. So, I do what I can to, uh, help keep it safe over there, and now we have a new, a new problem. I do want to say when, um, I don't know what, what is Hanson Boulevard, is that, uh, county also?
County Road seventy-eight. County Road seventy-eight.
Okay. And one hundred and twenty-first Avenue is also county?
I don't think so. Mrs. Mrs. Olson, I'm going to give you another minute here because you're on your third topic here, so I'll give you another minute.
Say that again?
I said, I'll give you another minute. You're on your third topic here, so, well, I'll give you another minute.
Okay.
Okay. I can't stop.
Anyway, they did not put signs up, um, to tell us that that road was going to be closed, and so that whole weekend, cars were making U-turns all the way along one hundred and twenty-first Avenue. So, I called the county, nobody did anything. I finally got ahold of Brett the middle of the week, so he finally put up a sign that, um, that there, there was no through traffic to one hundred and thirty-first, or, on one hundred and twenty-first to Hanson Boulevard. Okay. My complaint here is that the one hundred and twenty-first Avenue in front of the Blue Apartments and in front of our one hundred and forty-sixth, uh, uh, townhomes has become a parking lot for the city of, uh, Coon Rapids for people that live in both of those places, and it has become a very big safety issue. I don't know why it happened. I don't know any other road in Coon Rapids. I can drive all the way to University Avenue on one hundred and twenty-first, and there's no other place where cars are parked. Twelve to eighteen cars are parked there every day and every night. So what happens is, especially in the time of the COVIDs now, there are a lot of people riding bicycles, they're, they might have their little children behind them, uh, on the bicycle. The, uh, kids are riding the bicycles with them, and when they come to those cars, they have to move out into one hundred and twenty-first Avenue, and, um, that is very, very dangerous. It's also dangerous for us when we're driving out of our two entrances or the people across the road are driving out of their two entrances. It's very hard to see there's cars parked both ways. Um, so, uh, there's also a lot of, of, uh, speeding over there. As you well know, there's a lot of times there is a policeman over there, uh, and once Hanson Boulevard opens up again, it's going to be worse and worse and worse. So, what happened on our side is about three or four years ago, our association person decided that she dug up something that said that we cannot park in our visitor parking. And I know there are people in the city of Coon Rapids that have, uh, counted the spaces in both places. There really are enough extra spots besides their garage and their driveway in both places, and in the winter, there's no problem whatsoever. But as soon as, as summer comes, they start parking out there right and left. And my next-door neighbor, he has...
Mrs. Olson, I'm, I'm sorry, we're up to like six minutes here.
Okay, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, well, I sent a letter to everybody that know, that is, has part, has to do with this. So what I'm trying to, uh, say is that something needs to be done so that one hundred and twenty-first Avenue between Hanson and where it turns into Shenandoah, we would like to have that, uh, a no parking area except for when there's a, uh, party going on at the party room at the Blue Apartments.
Okay.
So that's our main thing, and, uh, so I would love to hear some, um, you know, feedback on that from, uh, anyone that I hope that you've all driven by there to see what I'm talking about.
Many times.
And, um, let me know what you think. Thank you. I'm sorry I took so long, Jerry, but you know I like to talk.
That's fine, that's fine, Bernice. Thank you. All right. Anybody else to, uh, address council tonight, open mic? Yes. No, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. I really appreciate everybody being here. Um, okay, thank you. We're going to close the open mic portion of our meeting then, and we have a response from last week's open mic, or, or two meetings ago, um, and it was involving the cruise, and it really just kind of, um, talks about that the staff met with the organizer of the car cruises to discuss resident and city concerns related to the car cruises, and a plan was agreed to that would allow parking on the Coon Rapids Ice Center grounds for the Saturday Night Car Cruise, and parking would be allowed from five-thirty to nine P.M. on Saturdays, and as the staff's opinion, that giving people a place to park will help alleviate traffic issues and cut down on cruising noise. Um, and then in regard to other issues, the police department is actively working to enforce traffic and driving violations during the cruise. Additional police officers have been assigned to patrol Coon Rapids Boulevard during the event. However, the act of driving on a public road itself is legal, and the city has limited options, if any, to address the cruise itself or the amount of vehicles that are accessing the public road. Um, and I think your, your public, your, your peer pressure is an amazing tool that you're using as well, you know, to, uh, call out people that are, the, the bad actors, let's say. So, um...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. I, I just want to publicly acknowledge the people that have been coming out with the, with the club to clean up and to keep an eye on things and to keep the focus positive. Um, I frankly think that we would be having a different conversation if the club wasn't involved. involved and if we didn't have the leadership from people like Keith and others to deter any bad behavior and, and to work collaboratively with the city, city staff and be responsive to the concerns that residents, residents have raised. So, I wanna publicly acknowledge and thank people for their cooperation and, and hope that we'll continue to get that kind of cooperation. And I also wanna thank the Coon Rapids Police Department for their approach and working with the people, um, that have been cruising and to keep it a safe place for residents. So, thank you all.
Yep. And I have to say, the Boulevard looks about as good as I've ever seen it look. You guys have been picking up stuff that's been there for probably years, so.
So, Mr. Mayor-
Councilmember Gazzer?
Just echo, you know, I've kind of been the, the lightning rod for a lot of the complaints since my ward goes along the Boulevard and, you know, and I think I commend the, the club because, you know, we got to the point where you, we all recognized that there are some issues and we, everybody was like, yeah, we don't want people out there throwing their trash or publicly urinating or popping wheelies on their motorcycle, doing dangerous things with their cars, you know, that, that we could come together and go, okay, how do we solve this? How do we mitigate some of the issues that the residents were seeing, but then still be able to have those hundreds of people line the Boulevard who enjoy it every weekend, you know, and that how could we find a balance to be able to allow, and it's not like we couldn't allow it, but to, to make sure that it was a positive for as many people in the community as we possibly could do. And I, I think working through the issues and, and putting to the Ice Center and then working on how we could get that to work as an agreement for some parking, I think is gonna be helpful. Well, I think last Saturday, I, I rode with the police department to just get another view. I mean, my husband and I have driven in the cruise, but now riding with the police officer is a little different view of the cruise. Um, and so, I, I think having everybody work together to find a community solution is really been what's helping us get through this and make it fun for everybody.
All right. Is it a ride-along if they make you sit in the backseat?
I didn't sit in the back.
Just kidding.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to invite you for a ride.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Other, other business to come before council this evening? Any other business? Mr. Stemwell, yes?
Mayor and Council, uh, so many things have been canceled this summer due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's sort of fun when I can announce some things that are actually occurring. Um, the list isn't long, but there are some things that are happening that have been organized by the city. Uh, primarily, I just wanted to mention that the farmer's market, which takes place, um, at the Coon Rapids Ice Center site on Wednesdays from three to six, will start on July fifteenth and that is still a go. And so, we look forward to having the activity out there and, um, under some modified conditions, of course, uh, related to the pandemic, but, um, that will happen weekly, starting the fifteenth through October. And then there are a number of recreation programs that do fit into that social distancing, um, aspect, including things like paddle boarding, yoga, um, and so forth that are occurring and signups are available now on the, on our website. So, just wanted to mention, there are a few things that are still going on this summer that we're a part of and hopefully they get filled up and used well.
Excellent. All right. Other business? All right. Um, I didn't plan to do this and I don't remember one of the firefighters' names now, but I just have to commend our, our, our fire department, our, our first responders. I mean, the, the police, the fire, everybody's just been yeoman through this whole COVID thing, having to go on with their jobs, you know, day to day. Um, and, uh, four weeks ago, four weeks ago today, um, my mom, who is ninety-nine years old, suffered a major stroke and went down. And I went over and met the ambulance in her parking lot and the firefighters were in with them, with her, the EMTs were in there and I thought she was gone. And, um, they got her off the ambulance or they got her off to the hospital. The firefighters stayed behind, they made sure that I knew what was going on, they knew that what was gonna happen at the hospital, that I wasn't gonna be able to go in there. Um, but because of their response, we knew exactly when she went down and when the doctor called and said, we've got this drug we can give her, it's a one in six chance it'll help and a one in twelve chance it'll kill her, but it has to be administered within three hours or three and a half hours, I said, it's only about an hour, 'cause I knew, I mean, everybody knew what was going on. And, uh, um, she transferred to the transitional care unit three weeks ago. She comes home Friday and she's doing amazing and she turns one hundred years old tomorrow. So, I just, uh, I'm, I'm just thankful, thankful to God, thank you to the firefighters, thank you for the EMT, thank you for the close hospital, I just couldn't be happier to live in Coon Rapids and, so, it's only good. Any other business to come before council?
Who to adjourn?
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.